I'd like to call this meeting to order. For all those who care to join me, please stand.
Okay.
And we'll see the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have two commissioners listening. I believe Heather was planning on coming. She's coming.
Sarah was going to be late.
And Sarah. Thank you. Heather and Sarah.
So I'd like to read our board norms. Debate, commentary, and discussion are healthy and open. Listening and speaking are equally important, and both should be done with respect and consideration. Focus is on students and our schools, not politics. Assume best intentions in all discussions. And may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Can I actually ask to pull out the action item for the alumni field bid, please?
Out of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so Bill, does that get pulled now? Or do we approve the agenda and then do the consent agenda? Okay. So can you hold that for just one vote?
So moved.
So moved. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the agenda is approved. Now, may I have a motion to pass the consent agenda?
Can I, can we pull out the alumni field bid?
Okay, can I have a second to that motion?
Why?
I'd second it for just a second.
Okay.
It's a clarifying question.
Okay, all those in favor?
It's a clarifying question.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're going to pull the alumni field bid out of the consent agenda. And we'll move that to right after the communications segment, before we go into school and program updates. Do we have any members from the public who would like to speak?
We have to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the alumni field bid?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, any members of the public? I see no members of the public who would like to speak. Okay. So can I have a motion to discuss the alumni field bid, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I wasn't at the last building committee meeting, so my question is, I mean, I see everything was discussed except for the lines. So what lines are going to be being put on the field? I know we had discussions a while back in regards to field hockey lines, so I just want to make sure that's kind of been something that's also...
Can we ask?
Whoever's going to answer, I don't know who.
So we're lining it, or it comes lined with, for soccer and lacrosse, football. That's it, right? And then we have the line markings or whatever.
The tick marks for lacrosse and field hockey as elected. So basically, the price includes any lines that you want.
So are we going to add field hockey as well? Because I know that's been a discussion.
Yes. I believe that was discussed, to add the tick marks for lacrosse and field hockey.
So when they do that, they use a paint to do it, when we use it for field hockey?
So basically, and that's kind of what standard, because you don't have, you know, a massive amount of lines and colors. And they're different seasons, so during the season, before the games, you basically paint them. And then by the time the next spring and fall, they're not overlapping.
I'm just curious, because I do have experience with turf, but I've not had experience painting lines on turf. How does that financially compare to having lines just put on there?
It's not a huge expense. I mean, it's basically the, it's the same paint that you would put on grass.
Right.
And the labor is probably an hour worth of work, and the cans are probably $9 a can. You might need 12, so.
But once you put them on, they're going to stay on anyway.
For the season, yeah.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. Does that clarify?
Mm-hmm.
May I have a motion to approve the alumni field bid?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Holden?
R.A. has happily celebrated filling our school-wide PBIAS token jar for the first time this school year. We held a staff versus students kickball game in the Keith Gym. It was a lot of fun for everyone as they loudly cheered on their grade level or beloved teacher. Six hundred and thirty-seven posters from 28 schools with over 90 judges cast online votes for students' artwork to be included in the annual Robert Howe Fire Safety Calendar for 2024. We are proud to say that J.B. Raver's artwork was selected for the month of June, and Scarlett Sawyer received honorable mention for December. Both students, along with art teacher Lori Kramer, attended a ceremony honoring all the winners at the Vermont State House on December 5th. The Northeast school community had a wonderful month of November, filled with lots of emphasis on kindness and community connection. We enjoyed having Officer Ernie LaGuardia from the Rutland City Police Department as our guest presenter for our school-wide PAO assembly on kindness. Thank you to our nearly 200 Northeast family members who joined us for our school Thanksgiving luncheon before the holiday break. We couldn't have done it without our fabulous food service team. We also had a great turnout for our PTC-organized grocery bingo, and loved seeing so many families having fun. This month, students at Northeast are spending the month of December practicing and highlighting examples of our monthly PAO character trait: creativity. Last week, our second graders had an awesome time exploring all the ways to be creative during a field trip to the Rutland Mint Maker Space where they made snowflake soap. Be sure to mark your calendars for December 18th, as our PTC is hosting a Make It, Take It Family Craft Night from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at Northeast. At Northwest, we have been filling our generosity bucket this month at Northwest Primary School. We provided the students and staff with a wonderful holiday luncheon. We had an assembly hosted by Mrs. Nelson's second-grade class focusing on gratitude. The students are hosting these assemblies each month and taking a leadership role. Northwest Primary would like to thank the community for their continued support. We have received an enormous amount of donations to support our children. I feel we are very blessed to be a part of this community, and our school is greatly supported. We will be having a school-wide "Make It" and "Take It Fair", along with some singing prior to the December break. Wellin Middle School is gearing up for our lifelong sports, which starts in January. We are excited to be skiing, climbing, playing tennis, golf, and bowling with our students. Our community partners have been amazingly accommodating and supportive. Our Community Resource Night in Coffee House is coming up on January 19th from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. We have about 25 agencies coming to educate the public about the services they provide. In addition, we will serve dinner, have student art presentations, and a closed bank and food cupboard. Please mark it on your calendar and stop in. Last week, Stafford hosted several members of the Rutland County Legislative Team, along with Mayor Dungus, to discuss possible ways for education, industry, and local municipalities to partner to create economic opportunities within Rutland County. We Work Ready Communities Initiative promotes creating a pipeline for future employees within our own community, which also makes Rutland County a desirable location for new businesses to possibly open. Exciting conversation with more to come. On Thursday, we hosted our annual Career Night. We had many prospective students and their families stop by for a great meal prepared by our Culinary Arts, followed by visits to our programs. Perspective students and their parents left commenting on the opportunities available that they were not previously aware of. Next week, we will hold the annual Woodward 500. This is a Pinewood Derby-type event in which programs work together to create a car that is then raced in heat. As this is Mr. Woodward's last year before retiring, we are expecting a great turnout. The race will be held on Tuesday, December 19th, beginning at approximately 10:00 a.m. Last year's winner, the S.T.C. main office staff, will be looking to repeat as fast a car this year. This event also coincides with Unique Holiday Sweater Day, so fun events for entire school community before break. Wellin High School was pleased to host a first robotics competition on Saturday, December 2nd. Over 400 attendees enjoyed the event as student teams competed by programming their Lego robots to complete a series of pre-assigned tasks. Rutland County teams competed with teams from across the state. High school-age students and staff served as organizers, coaches, referees, and the master of ceremonies. Thank you to all those who helped make it possible. Encore Theater put on the play Murder Most Fouled Up. The play tells the comedic story of the search for a family fortune after the death of a patriarch. Students played the roles of lawyers, servants, and relatives, both living and dead. Congratulations to Encore Theater players for another successful production. Wellin High School was pleased to once again host the state football division 1, 2, and 3 championships. Six different teams, their fans, and supporters all arrived and departed RHS throughout the day. Special thanks to all those boosters who volunteered and made the event possible. Wellin High School has been named one of the 300 state finalists in the 14th Annual Samsung Solve for Tomorrow Competition, receiving a $2,500 prize package. Samsung Solve for Tomorrow is a national competition designed to empower students in grades 6 to 12 to leverage the power of STEM to create innovative solutions addressing critical issues in their local communities. Students in 9th grade will complete a project which focuses on the critical issue of flooding in Rutland County. As a part of the project, they will engineer mitigation measures to reduce the risk of flooding. On December 15th, the Rutland High School Jazz Ensemble will be hosting an open-mic night in the RHS Theater. Members of the community are welcome to both attend and participate in the event, whether it be singing, poetry, comedy, et cetera. Admission is $5 per person, and there will be both a basket raffle and bake sale. All proceeds will benefit the RHS Jazz Ensemble and their trip this spring.
Thank you.
There's a lot going on.
Okay, thank you. And we have the UVM Outstanding Teacher of the Year recognition. If we could have the principals join us?
Sure.
Shall we stand behind?
[laughing]
You guys go ahead, sit.
Okay, we'll sit. I'll go first.
All right, excellent. We can make it work.
[laughing]
We'll switch.
So I'd like to introduce Ed Deacon. Ed has been with us at the Intermediate School for 16 years, currently serving as a 5th-grade teacher. He truly is an outstanding elementary educator who goes above and beyond to create meaningful connections with his students while fostering a love for mathematics. Ed is a grade-level team leader, and he uses trauma-informed practices instinctively. He is a die-hard Eagles fan. And likely owns the largest sweater vest collection. [laughing] Aside from all this, Ed has a remarkable ability to build strong relationships with students. This personal touch creates a classroom environment where students feel safe to take risks and ask questions, ultimately leading to increased engagement and confidence in his students. Ed is also an energetic and entertaining emcee for our school-wide events and staff functions. We couldn't be more honored to have Ed with us at the Intermediate School. Yes.
All right, thank you. As the new principal in Rutland, Ollie Brown was one of the first staff members that I met here. Ollie is the technology integrationist at Rutland Middle School. Is that right? Integrationist? Yeah, all right. That's why we put you by the keyboard there. Yeah. But he's also much more than that here for us. Ollie was at school every single day this summer. He was either helping to run the summer school, running the Epic program, or helping to train our new secretary and the new principal on any of the software programs that we have in place. Ollie was instrumental in putting together our needs-based flexible scheduling. Our students participate in a class called "When," What I Need, and that gives them the opportunity to get tutoring, remediation, and enrichment based on what they need most at that time. These selections change from week to week and utilize a feature in our Infinite Campus software that Ollie manages for us. As if this wasn't enough, Ollie is the building representative of the teachers' union in our building, and the relationship that the administrators and Ollie have is a great working partnership. Lastly, Ollie is the lead teacher in our UA Teachers Group, the non-core-based teachers. While Ollie Brown is not an administrator at her school, he is absolutely instrumental in the success each of us is able to achieve with the students that we work with. I am extremely proud to work with Ollie Brown, and I'm thankful that he does so much to support both his students and his colleagues. Congratulations on being named one of Vermont's Outstanding Educators. All right.
Good job, Ollie.
Thank you. [laughing]
Is he also an Eagles fan?
I don't think Ollie is an Eagles. I'm not much into sports ball, I'm sorry.
[laughing] I'm going to assume you're not into the vast sweater collection.
No, no. Barely into ties, so.
I just want to say congratulations to both of you. You're obviously a huge asset to our community and to all of our students, so thank you for all that you do. I haven't had any children yet. There's more to come, so stay tuned to have any of your classes. But I do have a son in Ollie's advisory, and he speaks so highly of Ollie, which says a lot coming from a student, and he enjoys his time there. So you're awesome, and as are you. [laughing] Thank you for all you do.
Very good. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Bill, moving on to our superintendent's report.
On your agenda, on the back of the agenda, we have our dates for upcoming meetings. And I just wanted to highlight one specific date, January 16th. We have a special school board meeting at 5:00 p.m. And so what that is, this is for your information as a reminder, too. We have, we're moving forward with our ESAR work, and we have HVAC bids out there for the Phase 3, Part of the, Phase 3B Part of the Project. And we have to get those bids approved by the board without wasting four weeks to the next board meeting. So we're asking if we could have you attend either in person or via Zoom. That meeting, it would start at 5:00 o'clock. We, I would imagine it would be fairly brief, we're just looking at the bids and approving them or not. And that would be it. And then we'll go right into the policy meeting.
Say, stick around for the exciting policy meeting.
Stick around, yeah. There are treats usually in those meetings. So that's just, I wanted to highlight that piece of information, so we don't miss that. First thing, and second thing. We have, in our last, let's see, in our October board, or sorry, I guess I should say, in October, we had our last design team meeting for our strategic plan work. We have been working on that all along. For the past number of weeks, we have three writing teams that are working on fleshing out, articulating what the strategic plan is going to look like in words. They are trying to look towards the portrait of a graduate. They're also trying to look at the needs of the district, and then trying to be very clear and specific about what we're shooting for with the strategic plan. Those three groups have put in a lot of work. We appreciate the work they've put in, a lot of hours. And then last week, we had our administrative group in this room take a look at what they've created so far. That took us a good chunk of time. I think it took us maybe over an hour to really dig through it, and it was a lot of work. So we've done that and given comments, some input to the writing teams. The next step in the process is that our design team meets again tomorrow night. And that is tomorrow night at Rutland High School, again in the theater, again 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And that's the chance for our community group, representing the community and the board to give input as to what's been written so far. And so that the writing teams can take all of this input, condense it down, and make adjustments as appropriate. So that's a reminder of that meeting. We hope you can all attend. And last, I, last month, we talked about the Declaration of Inclusion. The board endorsed the Declaration of Inclusion. That Declaration of Inclusion has been supported by many towns and organizations all across the state. And as we went through that process, it was good that the board was able to set the vision. But listening to our student reps, Holden and Amaya, they gave input as well. And from my perspective, it was interesting to hear them give their thoughts on where we are as far as creating a culture of belonging. And it was, you know, I think from my perspective, listening to what they said, we aren't there yet, we still have work to do. And I wish Amaya was here too, but I don't know if you agree with me, Holden, or not, but it seems like we still have work to do, and of course we do. We never reached that ideal, so we have to keep on trying to get better. I think about that, and I think about what's been happening worldwide in global events, in events and tensions in Vermont, and even in the county. So it becomes more important than ever that we pay attention to this and make sure that we're moving forward. I think as a educational institution, we should be constantly and consistently working towards the phrases in the Declaration of Inclusion, which state that we want everybody in our school community to feel safe and welcome, and that everyone receives fair and equal treatment. So I appreciate very much that the board stated this, that held this up as, this is the vision. It was great to have student input, great to hear your voice and give us input about where we are and where we need to still go. And so we're committing, as a district, to keep working on this in collaboration with the board, with our families, with our staff, and especially with our students. So I just want to, after listening to what you had to say, you and Amaya, I just wanted to kind of respond to that a little bit. So that's it for me, thanks.
Thank you. And next up is our ESAR update with Mr. Bliss. No update?
I think one of the things, I'll just off quickly, as we, as we're working through the meaningful engagement we need to do to update the ESAR plan, and then also to make sure we update how we're going to expend the remainder of the funds, we were crunching some numbers about what we have left. We couldn't arrive at accurate numbers yet. So Abby felt it would be better for us to wait and give a report in January. And also, when we go out for meaningful engagement, it will reflect actual, real-time numbers in terms of what we're doing. So a delay on that, but I apologize that we had it in the agenda, and then we had to retract it, but that's where we're at.
No, I understand. It's a huge, huge undertaking, so thank you for taking the time to make sure it's accurate. And now, Melissa and Ted?
So at last month's meeting, we had presented the budget for Stafford Technical Center. And as we alluded to, it's had come in higher than what we had initially included. So in your budget packet, I provided to you an updated version of where we are. The budget we had presented in November was a 6.8% increase over last year. With the jump to 16.4% for healthcare, it raised our tuition to 7%. And so we did bring that to our Rab Finance Committee, which again is composed of all of the superintendents of the districts that we serve. They approved that, moved it on to our full regional advisory board. And at our meeting last week on Wednesday, they also recommended that budget to all of you for consideration. So in the, no other changes were made, other than that one increase. So we put in three motions for you to consider this evening. The first one is approving the budget as presented with a 7% increase and a tuition rate of $21,306. The second motion is for giving us permission to accept the Carl D. Perkins Grant in the anticipated amount of $351,148. And we described the uses of that at the last meeting. And then the final one, which we also spoke about at the November meeting, was to give us permission to access our reserve funds for building improvements in FY '24 and '25 school year. So just kind of a recap of what we presented last time and what we're looking for approval for.
Karen?
I would move to accept the fiscal year '25 Stafford Technical Center budget as presented with total expenditures of $6,917,659, resulting in a total tuition of $21,306.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wishing?
No.
No. Asking anyone opposed? No. Okay, motion carries. And may I have a motion for number two?
Keep going. [laughing]
I would move to accept the federal Carl D. Perkins Grant for fiscal year '25 for use in support of the operation of Stafford Technical Center with an anticipated award amount of $351,148.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Karen?
Move to accept the recommendation to use reserve funds for building updates during fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25, not to exceed the amount of $160,000.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Mr. Plamanos with our fiscal year 2025 budget proposal.
Very much. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
You, you should have copies of the revised charts. We've been making changes by the day, as is often the case during this time. Now, that's interesting. Doesn't seem to be... I don't need to display the chart since I've...
Just got to turn the power on. There you go.
So there's an on-off there.
Oh, there you go. That would help, right?
Trying to save some pennies.
Thank you, thank you.
Bill, what are we going to do without you?
All right.
To make sure, should we transition them on? We're very well. All right. Perfect. So as I mentioned, there have been some changes. There's no change in basic message, but we've tightened up the numbers as we had been planning to do, based upon some figure analysis. And the good news is that going through that process, we've been able to reduce our budget request by several hundred thousand dollars from what we had reviewed earlier with the finance committee. So I'm going to walk you through some of the basics. If I go too quickly, please stop me if you have any questions. Of course, I'd be glad to try and answer those. Okay. Maybe I need to switch this one also. There you go. So it's interesting, because as we've been going through the budget development process over the last few months, our estimates have basically ranged between $63 million and $64 million, just depending upon various iterations and analysis. And in fact, it's ended up pretty much in the middle of that range. We're going to be, as I'll show you in a chart or two, we're going to be requesting an increase in expenditures of $3 million in fiscal '25, which would be equivalent to about a 5% increase in the total expenditures. Just by comparison, the December 1st annual tax letter that was issued by the Department of Taxation indicated that the statewide average increase in school system expenditures is likely to be in the double digits. They were estimating 12%. So obviously, we're targeting for Rutland City Public Schools to be less than half of that rate. One of the ways in which we're accomplishing that is by keeping our full-time employees steady at the current year's level of 495. We do that by judiciously working in the district's administration and with principals as people retire or resign, being very selective about whether we rehire for a given position and then rebalancing resources. So at this particular time, the administration and the principals are thinking that we can continue to operate all of the necessary programs and maintain our standards of excellence with the current level of staffing. I'm sure a lot of you have read about many of the changes that are coming for fiscal '25 in the fiscal, in the state education formula, the funding mechanism, and some of the thresholds. I'll be glad to answer questions if you have them, but the good... But the good news for our district is that we are going to be below or within a new five percentage point cap that will be applied to homestead property tax rates, basically saying that before you utilize the CLA, the base tax rate cannot increase by more than 5% year to year, and we'll be under that cap. The budget that we're presenting, as you probably recall, includes upgrades both for athletics per the bid award that you just approved this evening, as well as for IT. And the good news for us from a district funding standpoint is that those upgrades, the cost of those upgrades will be more than offset by a very substantial decrease in our financing costs for '25. And that corresponds with a roll-off of payment of several long-term debt issues that we will no longer need to finance for fiscal '25. So any questions about that overview before I proceed? Okay, great. You might recall that when we developed the fiscal '24 budget, we included $13.5 million to provide for the full remaining allocation of ESER funds, both ESER II and ESER III, which expire in early fiscal '25. As a consequence, we are not budgeting any ESER-related expenditures or revenues for fiscal '25. And in order to help see a more relevant comparison of expenditures year to year, the numbers that I'm going to show you from this chart going forward are presenting fiscal '24 without either the ESER expenses or the corresponding revenues. I mean, obviously, if we were to make the comparison with ESER at $74 million, you would expect a very significant decline. So we've done the math for you. And so the reference point for expenses will be 60.6 million for '24 excluding ESER. Okay? So with that, this next chart gets into some detail for your reference in terms of our expenses, again excluding ESER for fiscal '24, and there are no ESER expenses for '25. You can see in the first two columns there. So the fiscal '25 budget totals $63.6 million. That's a $2 million increase from the restated budget or a 5% increase in total, as I had mentioned to you earlier. Just by way of reference, there are, as you see, a couple of material decreases. If you look in the dollar change column, you'll see on the financing line, 3/4 of a million dollars, as I mentioned before. That's basically a 50% decrease in those costs. And if you look at, you know, $769,000, that's more than 1% of the entire budget. So that's clearly helping offset some of the other planned expenditures that we have. And we're anticipating that our utilities costs will drop for the first time in '25 in many years. And we are not attempting to forecast oil prices, propane prices. We are simply saying that if today's prices were to be flatlined and straightforward for the coming year, relative to what those prices were historically, we would anticipate saving about $100,000, almost a 10% savings. That's going to happen. Bless you. As you know, you know, heating degree days, how mild or how cold a winter is going to be, as well as those prices can impact this line. But so far, so good in terms of a mild winter, and we can hope that continues. I've put in a little box off to the right, a couple of notes regarding some of the more sizable increases that you see, both for IT and then the other category. And the reason, the main reason for the increase of about $300,000 in IT is because during the '24 budget, we were using some substantial ESER-funded dollars to take care of a variety of IT services and security matters that we needed to implement. We no longer have the benefit of those dollars from ESER, but we do believe there's benefit in continuing with those services. So those roll into the local budget and therefore appear, you know, as an increase, and indeed it is to the local taxpayer. But it's not as if we're going out and all of a sudden increasing the things that we're doing by more than 40%. The other category, as you probably recall, includes where we put the provisions for replacing the artificial turf. And as I've noted there, the fiscal '25 budget includes $475,000 in order to complete the replacement in the late summer and early months of fiscal '25. I'm sure you'll recall that we had already put in $250,000 in fiscal '24. So you can see that most of that $370,000 increase is related to the turf. That's very close to the, that $725 total for the turf is very close to the bid that you approved tonight with a little bit of cushion there as we get into the implementation. Let me stop there and ask if you have questions about, you know, any of these particular expenses or line items? Okay, let's move on then. This next chart shows you the revenue side of the picture. And this is, this is kind of interesting. Of course, again, you've got the '24 budget, which excludes the $13.5 million of ESER that we had on the expense and the revenue side. Now our '25 budget, and as you can see, the good news for our district is it looks like our federal grants and reimbursements are going to increase by several percent, more than $400,000. So that's a help. We're anticipating that tuition revenues will probably increase by about 5%. We'll be coming back to the school board at your meeting in January with a recommendation for what those tuition rates should look like. You might recall that for the last two years, we've requested and you have approved some fairly sizable percentage increases in our tuition rates. And that was because when we did some analysis, we recognized that tuition that we were charging to other towns was significantly below our average costs, and we didn't deem it prudent to continue to basically subsidize those towns. We're closer to alignment, although I will say that we recently heard from the AOE, they recently issued some data, preliminary data on what actually happened in fiscal '23. And the AOE puts together some guidelines that they call allowable tuition. We're in the process of looking at that now, and it looks as though for fiscal '23, we could have charged more than what the maximum the state would have allowed. So as we continue to look at that, and when we come back to you in January with a recommendation on tuition, we'll factor those things in. The special education and local line, as you can see, that's down more than half a million dollars. That's basically reflecting about a $400,000 reduction in something called the Census Block Grant that the state calculates and allocates. That's based on a formula that they have shared with all school districts. Some are winning, some are losing. We're losing some money, and we will continue to do so for the next year or two based on their formula. But what they take away with one hand, we will get back with another. Because what that means is that bottom line of state education funding will basically go up by a comparable amount. So when you have the federal grants going up and the special ed going down, as you can see, we're anticipating that our federal and local revenues altogether will basically be flat. Now, what that means is that then allows us to derive what we can expect to ask from the state of Vermont from the General Education Fund. Because as I've shown for you at the bottom there in that bullet point, the state education funding that we're going to request of almost $42 million is basically what's left over after you take our total expenditures, subtract out what we're able to get from the federal and local revenues, and the remainder has to be funded by taxpayers of Vermont, not just taxpayers in Rutland City, but also throughout the state. Yes?
I'm sorry, I just had a question about the special ed. Why is there such a decrease?
So the answer is because the AOE and the legislature enacted new laws, which basically changed the funding mechanism for how the state reimburses for special education expenses. So in the past, the state used what's called a cost reimbursement model. And you may have heard of that. But basically what they said was, well, every year you calculate what you have spent in certain qualifying categories, the state will reimburse you for 56 cents on the dollar of those expenses. And then for certain categories where there may be extraordinarily high costs for specialized services, they'll reimburse up to 90% of the increment. The legislature, both the House and the Senate Education Committees, decided that there was a better way to allocate resources for these purposes. And so they enacted something called a Census Block Grant. And what that does is it moves you from a reimbursement paradigm to a fixed block grant per student. And what they're saying is, all students are the same throughout the state? All students cost the same amount throughout the state? And it doesn't matter if you're in a rural or an urban location? So in other words, this is pretty contrary to the philosophy that we have, but they made the rule and that's the decision. They came up with a...
When does that go into effect? I'm sorry?
It's in effect now. And it's transitioning. So what they said was, they picked a number, this is what you should spend per student who qualifies for these services. Then they took a look at, there are some districts that are spending more than that per student, some districts spending less than that per student. Over the next several years, they're going to transition the high and the low districts to come to the average. So that means there are going to be some school districts, not ours, who will get a windfall, who are spending less per student. And so the antithesis of Robin Hood is going to give more money to those people, even though they're not spending it. So that would infer...
Why would we give money to...
You'll need to ask your representative.
Okay.
But in any case, what that means for us is for Rutland City, because our needs are greater. We've talked about that many times, and Pam has discussed that with you. Our average per student was higher in this category, so we are going to be transitioned down to the state average. What that means is when you, but like I said, when you take more money out of one category, in this case, the math works out so that we will simply be getting it from the state. The problem with that is, over time, if there's too much of a change there, it's that state education fund line that drives the tax rate. So the higher that number goes, the higher the tax rate goes, all of the things being the same. But of course, all of the things are never the same. And fortunately, in our district, because the administration has done such a great job with your guidance, of course, in being good stewards of the financial resources, things are so far pretty well aligned, and we know this is coming. And so we'll do the rebalancing, if we need to do rebalancing, to keep from having any significant or deleterious effects. That's the goal. I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah. But it's really amazingly complicated, and there have been errors in the initial calculations.
Not surprising.
Not. But you know, but in fairness to the people doing those calculations, I will say, they've done a great job with what they had to work with. It's hard to do new things for the first time. So, but we think that's settled down and that we understand it. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Courtney?
This totally excludes Stafford, right? The tuition?
Let's see. Yes, that tuition excludes Stafford, 100%. Okay, great. Let's go on to the next chart then. So if you look right in the middle of this page, okay, the bullseye, you'll see the Then we just ended the last page, which is the amount of state funding that will be requested per the '25 budget. And I've described for you how we got to that number. Now here, now it gets a little bit interesting, and I'm going to try not to get too far into the details here. But part of the Act 127 implementation is that the state chose to change the way it measures students, counts students, for the purposes of allocating money. So for the past couple of years, you've heard me talk about equalized pupils. And we would say, okay, whatever the equalized pupils are, based upon weights assigned by different categories of students, weights, by the way, that were more than 20 years old. In '24, the budget that we presented to you and which was approved by the voters said, oh, okay, Rutland City has 1,917 equalized pupils using those weights. And basically, the short story there is, you start with a count of students in different categories, you add some weights by category, you come up with a revised total, which in our case was higher than the actual enrollment, intended to reflect additional costs to educate some members of our community. That's all gone. So starting with '25, but I'm showing you some comparable numbers for '24, we're going to be using, per the legislation, a new metric called long-term weighted average daily membership. And it's not only a different metric, but it does use new weights. It does not use the exact weights that were recommended by the 2019 UVM study, which is unfortunate for us, because our district would have benefited more from this change had they used the original recommendations. But it's beneficial nevertheless. So if you were to go back, and the AOE did this for all of the school systems, and say, okay, using the new formula and the new weights and using the counts that you had for the '24 budget, what would that have meant? And the answer is 3,020, you know, and change, students for our school system. So as you can see, that's a pretty significant change. It's not that the number of students increased by more than 50%. It's just the way that we're counting for them did. And just for interest's sake, for those of you who track what the yield is doing on a year-to-year basis, one of the reasons for a sharp decline in the yield is because of this change in calibration. Now, using that metric of 3,000 ADM, our new cost per student, and notice I'm not saying cost per pupil, because we're not using equalized pupils anymore, our new cost per student for this year's budget would have been 12,800. That was a little bit below the Vermont average of 12,900. I'm not necessarily saying that that's a good thing, because there are many different factors. But we were not too far from the middle of the range. Now, let's look forward to '25. So I've put in the numbers there, including what the state has to fund, the $41,600,000. Now, what they're saying is, based on the preliminary run of these new metrics for '25, it is looking as though Rutland City will be given credit for 3,315 students per this new metric, which of course, as you can see, is a 10% increase. That's very beneficial for the district, because it's giving us more credit proportionately with that kind of an increase for students in need and whom we service. Now, I caution you here, the reason why these numbers are in blue is because they're not final, and they're still being changed. So this week, for example, statewide, there are efforts going on to update metrics, including free and reduced lunch and English language. I don't know how much this could change. I'm simply telling you that it could change. And typically, what happens is, because of the weightings and the way these things are calculated, if a significant change over here, it can result in proportional changes over there. So sometimes you can be affected by others' changes. But as of today, with the numbers that we have today, what this says is that the average cost per student for Rutland City with the budget that we're proposing would actually go down by 2%, down to $12,573, which, you know, is obviously helpful from a tax rate standpoint. And the final caution or caveat I'll offer you is, just because your average cost per student goes down, does not mean automatically that your tax rate's going to go down. Because as you know, there are many other factors. What is important is, a decrease in this average student cost does tend to help lower the tax rate, all of the factors being the same. So let me stop, because I know I've, you know, put a lot of information in front of you. But basically, the easiest way to think about some of the changes going on is a swap of the student count from equalized pupils to this long-term weighted average ADM, and then it changes how the other metrics calibrate. Overall, for us, this is a good news story. We advocated quite vigorously for a long time to make some changes recommended by the UVM study, and it seems that one of the changes, which involved measuring students from families of lower income and measuring those better rather than undercounting them, may be benefiting us here.
Charlie?
I just want to make a comment.
Yes.
Ted, that, you know, your level of preparation that you have given us, especially in committee, over the past several months, you've given us this information. And I feel like it's just a testament to our understanding, because when you ask a question and there's silence, we truly don't have a question, because we are apprised of this information. I just want people to understand that, you know, watching too as well, that we're not just kind of sitting here taking this information and, yeah, no questions, I don't really know what you're saying. No, it's because... No, it's because we do understand-
Yeah.
And, and it's helpful too, because we're not, you know, spending time, and, you know, we appreciate everybody's time here.
Right.
So it does help all the, the committee work that you're doing with us in the finance committee.
Well, I appreciate that very much. Thank you for saying that, because, you know, I do look around the room, and I'm looking into people's eyes.
Well, yes.
I can figure out if I'm doing anything.
Yeah, it's really tough information, right.
Or maybe it's just we're following it all along.
Right, it's a lot of information, but we have been absorbing it for quite some time, so, yeah.
I appreciate that, yeah, and we've tried to do it kind of in installments, so we don't have to read the whole book at once.
Yeah.
But the good news is, as this process has gone on too, over recent months, that, you know, we've benefited from conversations with other business managers and, and with the AOE, who's been very, very proactive. And so it seems like the story is now, now sort of gelling even as confusing as it seemed originally. Thank you so much for saying that, I appreciate it very much. That means I'm doing my job, which is a good thing. Okay, what's not changed? This is the easy part, and I won't read through the list, you're probably already familiar with, hopefully, the things that have not changed, but I'm glad to answer any questions if you have. Yes?
Enrollment.
Yes.
I know you can't predict enrollment, but-
I can, it just won't be right.
Yeah. Does that kind of jive with everything that you're stacking and all that?
Well, that's a really great question, and thank you for that. So, we do try and anticipate enrollment. As you may know, our registrar and a couple of, and many of our administrative folks, several times a year, are taking snapshots of our enrollment, and that's basically a head count of the students that we see in the class. When we do things like try and project what we anticipate our food service costs might be next year, we definitely think about, okay, what does the enrollment trend look like? Is that, does that mean more students or less students for the coming year, and then of course you factor in the prices? So right now, if you were to compare, because we did this in the past week, if you were to compare the enrollment report for December, this December of '23 versus December of '22, the enrollment report was different by about nine. Okay, so in one case, this month, we had 1,829 students on the enrollment report, last year, at this time, 1,820. So a little bit of an increase, basically only half a percent, but yes, we do look at that. And then your question also applies, of course, to the strategic plan, because as we're developed, this is only the one-year forecast, and we, we do think ahead, because you have to consider, what are we anticipating for those enrollment trends, and what are the implications for future budgets? And the only real assumptions you have to make in that regard are, how many students do we anticipate coming in to the pre-K grade every year in first grade grades, and how many do we expect to lose or gain by respective grades? Because we know exactly how many students are enrolled in every grade in each school, and so we take a look at those trends, and with certain assumptions, you can make a pretty educated guess about what's coming.
Sorry. That is amazing.
I had it, I had it on, do not disturb.
I'll ask about that later.
I really would make a terrible joke.
How did you get that ringtone? I want it. I'll share with you. Thank you.
There you go. Did that answer your question? Okay, that's great. Okay, so what I'll do is I'll just, that's good, because you know Glenn is really good at making jokes, and I am not. We were able to add a little welcome comic relief, and I appreciate that greatly, guys. If I had thought about it, I would have been the one sending you the- So, anyway, I'm not anticipating any changes between now and your next board meeting on January 9th. You'll be officially asked at that time to approve a proposal to go forward to the voters. Obviously, if anything dramatic changes between now and then, we get some update from the AOE we hadn't expected, or that number of students comes out and is revised significantly based upon the next iteration, of course, we'll advise the finance committee immediately, and, you know, we can make any determination. But my gut feel tells me, based upon what we've been observing, that the process is coming together statewide pretty well, so at this time, I have no reason to think there'll be any significant change from what we're looking at. And on that, in that regard, I'd just like to thank, again, all of the administrative leaders, the principals, who, you know, they, they work so hard for many, many months. And typically, we're thinking about this all year long, it's not just, you know, a couple of presentations here and there. So these results, which I think, in this environment, are relatively good, reflect the effort of a lot of people over a lot of time. And the only reason I know what's going on is because I ask a lot of questions, so. Thank you for that. All right, look forward, yes?
I just want to, again, thank you for all the work that you did on the Coalition, for the new, I mean, two years' worth of-
It's incredible.
-weekly budgets and meetings and so much work, and I'm so glad that it turned out positively.
It, it looks like it's turning out a little bit more positively than we thought a month or two ago, and I, I could not be more thrilled about that. High return on investment time, and I was glad to contribute, but thank you so much for saying that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. I will have a great holiday season.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
Save the battery, Ted.
Yeah. In the future, I'm going to bring a backup in my pocket. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to committee reports. Stephanie, Commissioner Soodley?
So, at last week's building committee meeting, we talked about the ongoing outdoor classroom progress updates at the various schools. We had our final conversation in regards to the turf and the bid recommendation going to the board, which was field turf. The RIS gym floor, we have that bid, and the work should start to redo that gym floor in mid-February, done hopefully around the start of June, and just continuing the stormwater updates for the various locations of the schools.
Thank you. Anyone, questions?
Well, yeah, I have one.
Yes, Trish.
I'm just curious, because I'm looking up on the floor update, and it looks like it's going to be out of commission. What is the plan for these intermediate school children, as far as games, where will they be playing?
For phys ed classes, the, the schools are working with, with Glenn and with, so really between the middle school and intermediate school, to look for spaces that they're going to be able to use and share that, share the time, or share, share the space for use of the gym for basketball. We're going to have to, again, do the same thing, look to use other spaces.
That's the prime time for basketball season. I'm a little worried about that.
Actually, there was some discussion at the meeting that the building won't start until February, and the majority of the season will have already happened, so it's only going to be a pinch at the end.
And, and if I can interject, I believe Glenn also said that he tried to push it out as far as possible, explaining the basketball, but they're also very busy, so he had to take them when he could fit them. But it is near the end of the season, so hopefully it's a minimal effect on the basketballs.
We can always shovel off the courts outside and get, we have to, be flexible.
Hey, Mary Beth?
Thank you. We had our last meeting on Tuesday, December 5th, following the building committee meeting, and the fiscal year 2025 budget was our sole topic, which we just learned quite a bit about, so I will not recap it, because that's an excellent job. And he, you know, Charlene said he did, he does, he props us so well on those committee meetings, so thanks for saying that, Charlene, because I think it does sometimes look like we're glazed over as we sit here, but I think it is because we do truly understand.
Truly understand. There's no questions, they're probably going, yeah.
Yeah, so.
But no, we really don't.
Yeah, thank you for saying that, yeah. The committee, we, we did also discuss how some budget, budget-related metrics, like student counts, to be issued by the Agency of Education are still in progress, and certainly could, could change in January. And our next committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, the 2nd of January, but if there's no significant revisions to the budget between now and then, we will likely decide that we won't have a meeting, and we'll make that decision by Thursday, December 28th. And that's it, thank you.
Questions? Anyone? If Ted? Kevin?
So, on the agenda here, it says we're looking at four different policies for first reading. That's because there were two of them that we discussed at our October meeting, but we didn't vote on them at the following board meeting, so we have to vote on them, all four of them today. So, the travel, the 5790 travel reimbursement, we added three words, per diem limits, in addition to the other things, and we did talk about this a month ago. And the 7340, which has to do with modifying the Rutland High School graduation requirements, basically, we looked at, it used to be family consumer science was a, was a requirement, and that's been changed to life skills, to reflect more of a job preparation kind of bent. And Greg, I believe, was at the last meeting talking about a couple of the, the new classes that we added, so we have talked about that one as well. Then the two that we talked about this past month had to do with looking at the petty cash policy, and, and what we, we basically went out and asked the different schools, you know, how's it working, and what changes do you want to make, and we sort of tweaked the amounts that are at the different schools. Stafford wanted to have a little more, so they went from 350 to 650 available. Rutland High School went from 300 to 350, and the athletic office went from 1,400 to 1,500. We did rework the specifics, I think it was more to like make it more of a policy rather than a specific procedure. It's not dramatically changed from the, let's see, and then, and then 6110 is goals, is goals and objectives of the personnel system, and man, we talked about this one for a long time, and it was mostly grammatical stuff, and most of the suggestions we came up with, we decided not to do in the end, anyway, so it's, it's largely the same policy that it was with, with the right Oxford commas in the right places, and, and, you know, it was fine tuning. So I would recommend that we vote to approve all four of those.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Just curious, I mean, I know what petty cash is, but why would the, why does the athletic office have so much?
For, because they do cash boxes for the various games.
Okay.
And some games, like, you know, football, they-
$1,500?
Because there's two cash boxes.
Right.
So if there's, say-
But that, they go into each game with that much cash?
It could have multiple games, right, so you might have a, we'll say, a basketball game happening, a hockey, hockey game happening.
I would just caution people about discussing too much of that publicly. We don't want to entice anyone.
But there's always two people that have access, like-
Right.
There's always two people with it, and it's pretty controlled. And like, when you're done with it, it has to go, there's usually administrator on site for each game, and the administrator takes said-
I'm thinking that these are probably not going to be watching.
Not that they're probably watching.
Okay, any other questions?
I would move to approve all four first reading policy changes, 5790, 7340, 5530, and 6110.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kevin. Any unfinished business? No unfinished, no unfinished business. Any new business? New business. Okay, um, do you have, oh, here we go. I entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of consideration of contractual matters, the premature release of information regarding those subjects, which would place the board at a substantial disadvantage. And we'd like to invite Rob Bliss, Ted Plomenos, and Bill Olson.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.